Oh, we're time to go. Okay. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our weekly board session. It's Wednesday, September 6th, 2023. We're here in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And as always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We don't have anyone sign up for public comment, but we do have two proclamations. And the first one is we're going to consider approval of a proclamation designating the month of September 23 as National Recovery Month in Marion County. Carol, are you coming up? Great. It looks like you have some friends, too, huh?
I do. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
For the record, Carol Hurd, Division Director with Addiction Treatment Services with Marion County Health and Human Services. Thank you for that reminder. I am here today asking to designate September 2023 Recovery Month in Marion County. Recovery Month is a national observance held every September intended to educate Americans that substance use and treatment and mental health services can enable those with a mental health and/or substance use disorder to live a healthy and rewarding life. While often the stigma associated with the substance use and mental health discourages individuals from seeking such life-changing help, Marion County Health and Human Services and our community partners are committed to promoting environments that acknowledge and support the relationship between substance use and mental health disorder recovery. Millions of Americans' lives have been transformed through recovery. Since these successes often go unnoticed, the observance of Recovery Month reinforces the positive message that behavioral health is essential to overall health, prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce you to a few folks who are here today to share their journey with you. Jeff?
Hello, I'm Jeff Carone.
Go ahead, yes.
So, in 2008, I got in a really bad auto accident. I was a production supervisor and just going up the ladder of success there, had a young family. And this accident led to opiates. It led to getting prescribed painkillers from my doctor, and it became a real problem, and the amount of it went up. And I knew nothing before that time, anything about opiates, any of it, it was just given to me. And so, as that started to happen, things started to fall apart. I wasn't as effective at work. It eventually led to me losing my job, breaking down my marriage, my family. And when the prescriptions that I was getting from the doctor wasn't enough, I turned to the streets. My wife had a surgery as well, and the same thing. So here we are, both on opiates, and start to turn to the streets. Or eventually, we ended up doing other drugs as well because we couldn't get enough of the painkillers. And it ended up, one night, with the cops at our door, our kids getting taken, losing our home, all our possessions, and me in jail. And I was still just so stubborn. And they forced me to go to this place, Marion County Addiction Services, and I was a hostile client. I didn't want to do it. What could they teach me? They don't know me. About that time as well, I got an infection in my hip, and ended up in a wheelchair for three years. I had four surgeries. It dissolved part of my pelvis, part of my hip, part of my femur. And Marion County, they gave me a mentor, and they started taking me to the hospital up there in Portland, like just U. And it's like, I don't know, it just hit me. I got hit. It was like my rock bottom here, my kids are away from me, I'm supposed to be doing all these things, my marriage is getting ready to dissolve. I have this, I can't even walk anymore. And if that ain't rock bottom, I don't know what it is. Growing up, being a person of faith, I yelled, "I give up. Yield, Lord. Help me. What do I do?" And he changed my heart. He gave me a new heart and a new mind, and I started to see things in a different light. I started to see this as a group of people that didn't want to control me, that didn't want to be, you know, all-powerful over me, but sincerely, one of my best interests sincerely cared if I succeeded, sincerely cared if my kids came back or my marriage. And it was just like, this group of people are so amazing. And so, things started changing at that point. I understood, they started teaching me about it. The great thing about Marion County is that they were hard when they needed to be. They were always empathetic. They were willing to listen and walk beside me. And I appreciate, I really appreciate them not allowing me to manipulate the situation as far as looking back on that. And so, the education was amazing that they gave me, and it really helped me understand this beast and what was going on in my mind. And they got me on methadone, which didn't get me, I thought for a long time, well, you know, it's get you high or whatever. I didn't know about methadone, but it doesn't. It works different, and it blocks those urges, and it allows my brain to function the way that it should function. And so, we got all these operations. I'm able to walk today, and at the same time, understanding that along with my body, I need to also take care of the person inside, the spiritual part. I got a really good church that supported my family, and so it was a team effort. And that's really what I started to realize, is that these are the real heroes in my life, the counselors, the people that walk beside me, the people that gave money to fund these programs, my children who accepted and forgave me and my wife for what we put them through because they didn't deserve it. And society doesn't deserve what we did. You know why? Me and my wife were lost in our addiction and figuring out there was good people that were still going to work every day, there was good people that were still paying their taxes, their dues, and believing in my wife and myself. And that's what we want to give back for that. You know, now, I go downtown every Friday talking to others, number one, about what God can do in a person's life until they yield, but that there's sources out there, there's research, there's people that care. I believe that, you know, God has laid on their hearts to do this for others, and it's just an amazing thing. So, I do a growth group on Wednesday, where I help other people and mentoring other people throughout the week. Because I am disabled now, but one thing I can do is I can share my story, and I can shine a light, because a lot of it is that education, a lot of it's just not knowing. A lot of it is just having somebody there that's not going to stab you in the back that just wants the best for you. So, I am so grateful and thankful to Marion County, to you guys who fund these, you know, that allow the funds to happen, and to my family. But more than anything, I want to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who has given me a new heart and a new mind and a new way to look at things. Next June, we'll be celebrating 23 years of marriage, my wife and myself. And while I was in a wheelchair handicap, she put herself back to school because she forced her to stay-at-home mom. So she got a dual degree and took care of me and put up with me. And while she was going to school, she was working a job, and she is just the backbone of our family. She's my hero as well, and we walked alongside this, and that's my grandchild back there, my first grandchild. I have three girls that have all graduated from school. And my son is eight years old, he'll also graduate because, oh, she was pregnant, too, while that was happening. So it was quite the load on her. Because I can never write a check big enough to pay you guys back, to pay society back. I can't. But what I can do is pay it forward these ways by preparing my children to be productive members of society, because we came from a broken home. And, you know, the story of so many Americans now go in all of it, but we just did not know how to be part of society. So we're changing that, we're breaking that deep. But this is the pillar, it's so important, because for me, Recovery Month is so much more than just the addict. Recovery Month is the family, the society who, we heal together and we grow together because it affects everybody, not just us. So when I think of September, and I'm thinking this is Recovery Month, I'm thinking of everybody else that allowed me back in society, allowed me to be part of it again when I was so against it at first. So, yeah, I'm so grateful to all of you guys. This is my family, society, and to you. Thank you so much for all you guys have done in my life.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
And then we have Alexandria and Freddie.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for sharing.
Hello, my name is Alexandria Immaculus, and I'm here to share my story with you. I was clean and sober for four and a half years between 2015 and 2020. I moved to Salem, Oregon in September of 2015 to get clean and sober. During that time, I was staying with a friend's mother while he is currently serving his time with the O C. About a year later, we ended up getting married at O S C I. In November of 2019, I found out my mother was battling stage IV lung cancer, and it was rapidly taking over her ability to live. By Christmas Eve of 2019, I received a phone call saying, "If I wanted to say my goodbyes, I better be on my way to Washington." I was working for Marion County Circuit Court from 2018 until June of 2020. During COVID, I was placed on a furlough due to my health conditions that made me a high risk to the virus. I found myself with too much time on my hands and falling into my addictive behaviors. I believe the loss of my mother played a big part in June of 2020, or played a big part. In June of 2020, I had a domino effect that led me right back into a full-blown relapse. The domino effect included me totaling my car on Lancaster Drive Northeast, five seconds away from my home, multiple encounters with Salem paramedics, and criminal charges which resulted in me being terminated from my career with Marion County Circuit Court. My mental state of mind at this time was scary and uncontrollable. I had resisted arrest and began fighting the police trying to detain me. Also, weeks later, I got driving violations in my rental car and arrested and brought home. I was devastated and in denial that I had let go of everything I had worked so hard for in the last four and a half years I was clean and sober. I met my current fiance, Freddie, in the beginning of May of 2020. When I met Freddie, I knew he was something that God had sent my way because of all the grief I was facing and the loneliness that continued to linger. Sad truth is, I had not relapsed and asked him for drugs the moment I met him. We wouldn't have our amazing little boy and would have never known each other. Through what I was going through, Freddie was my strength and what was keeping me above ending up in the state hospital. His love for me and caring ways is what sealed the deal, and I knew I wanted him in my life regardless of where we were going to end up. At this time, he was practically living with me in my studio apartment, and through our addiction, we were still holding on to one another. By February of 2021, Freddie and I had been, or, excuse me, Freddie had been missing for three days, and I couldn't find him. A friend ended up coming to our apartment, and I asked in a panic, "Have you seen Frederick?" He explained to me that he was picked up with criminal charges and lodged at Marion County Jail. Sure enough, I looked up the jail roster, and there he was. I was so sad and worried, I called the jail to see when his court date was, and I went to support him. He did about two months, and I kept in contact the whole time. A few months after he was released, I started to feel different and noticed I was changing. My belly was growing, and I didn't truly believe I could get pregnant due to having reconstructive spine surgery on April 24th of 2008. I had a conversation with Freddie, letting him know that I could be pregnant and that I was sure it was going to be his. Since he was in jail, he wasn't sure that was totally true. I ended up going to Hope and having a pregnancy test done, and it came back positive. I was so happy and excited but scared at the same time because I was in my active addiction. When I found out, they told me I was already six months along. My jaw dropped, and I was terrified. The what-if set in, and Freddie and I began to grow further apart. He went with me to the only echo appointment I had and got to hear the baby's heartbeat. He cried and was drawn closer to me when he knew I was really carrying a baby and that the baby was possibly his. The only other appointment I went to was my first ultrasound to make sure all the parts were there and to find out what I was having. It was confirmed I was having a little boy. I have always dreamed of being a mom, but because of my back surgery, the surgeon said he was unsure if I would be able to carry. I knew right then that his name was going to be Mason, and I was going to love him so much. On October 13th, 2021, I was in such bad pain, and I knew my son was already a week late. I was scared of going to the hospital because I knew I wasn't going to be able to take him home. I had used up until an hour before I left for the hospital. When getting to the hospital, Freddie and I got into an argument, and I attempted to walk home. I didn't make it far before I realized I didn't have my house keys and that he threw them towards the security shack. I walked back, and security advised me that I was probably going into labor and that it would be best if I was seen. I agreed to go only on the conditions that I wanted, what was best for my son and the fact of how severe my pain was. I don't remember much from this moment. I was coming down and on medications from the hospital, so I was in and out of it. I do remember them telling me that I was going into labor and I would have to have an emergency C-section. The only other surgery I have ever had was my back surgery. The only difference was my dad and sister were there, and I had the additional support. Needless to say, I don't believe I had any other complications other than the fact that we were both going to test positive for drugs. On October 14th, 2021, I gave birth to Mason. I continue to, or I continue to try to get a hold of Freddie, but the fact that he didn't know if Mason was his, he was distant. He got to see Mason two days before I had to leave him at the hospital. CPS got involved and took custody of him, and he was being placed with my cousin and her husband. A few weeks after he was born, DHS visits were started, but they wouldn't let Freddie visit until the paternity test came back. A few months went by, and the test came back that Freddie was indeed the father of little baby Mason. We still had yet to treat our addiction, and visits continued for 13 months. On May 24th, I had court for my criminal charges but was three hours late. This was the third and final time I was taken into custody for my second time. This time, I had not been released but held for 40 days. During my stay, I had the ability to get clean and sober and think about what I really wanted in my life. I had never been lodged at jail and knew that's not where I wanted to be. During my stay there, I was able to get in contact with my father and had a good, long talk about what I should do with my son. He told me I should sign him over to my cousin, and that would assure me he would have a great life. I responded by telling my dad I wanted to be a mom to Mason and that I was going to put up the fight. Being released from jail, I ended back at my ex-husband's mother's. I didn't have anywhere else to go, and I knew I needed to continue being sober. That lasted all but a week, and I became very uncomfortable and headed back to the streets to use and to find Freddie. By December of 2022, the court decided to put us into TPR court, and we were facing losing our rights entirely. On January 24th of 2023, I decided to surrender and commit to going to treatment through Marion County Drug and Alcohol at her place. I fought it at first, and my mentor Stacy told me if I didn't take the opportunity, I would not be able to have Mason until he was old enough to decide because he was going to be adopted by my cousin. A few days into treatment, my caseworker came to talk to me and notify me that I got, notify me that I got into treatment before the adoption process started, and I still had a small chance of regaining my son. She reassured me that if I left, I indeed would not be a part of his life. The third day of treatment, and what I thought was hell, Freddie came to me with the news that he was going to detox and was going to do this process with me. I now celebrated seven months clean and sober on August 24th, and three days after me is my fiance, Freddie. In the five months that it took me to complete inpatient treatment at her place, I was able to complete the requirements for my criminal charges, complete all of the requirements to have Mason returned home to me after 19 months on May 31st, and graduate inpatient treatment on June 22nd. On June 22nd, my family, Freddie, Mason, and I were able to be completely reunited at Iron Tribe Network. Two months into Iron Tribe and only four months to go, my case with DHS will be closed, and we will be presented with a BUP voucher for housing. I have also gotten the suspensions lifted from my driver's license and obtained my driving permit. Due to having to have an SR22, I am still in the process of obtaining my actual driver's license. I sincerely thank you for letting me share my success story with you today, your ability to fund the program I was able to be a part of, and has allowed me to be a first-time mom, and gave me the skills to maintain my sobriety.
Hello, my name is Freddie Rosales. I am here today to share my story with you. My addiction started back in 2013 while I was a student within the Marion County School District. It started as a weekend habit to have fun and socialize with friends. That didn't last long, and it became an everyday habit that soon I learned I could no longer control. During this time, my family was unaware of my choices and the impact it would soon to bring to my life. A couple of months into my addiction, I began, I began nodding out in class, and I was called into the principal's office to discuss why I was falling asleep. On the first day of my senior year, he asked me if I was high on substances, and I admitted that I indeed was. From there, he expelled me, and my mother sent me to live in Anaheim, California with my father. A few years, a few years passed, and I was clean and sober, up until I ran into a few guys who I later, I later found out had access to drugs. By this time, I was into a relapse that caused me to be held hostage in a park for more than 12 hours for about 100 bucks. I was able to contact my aunt, who was able to pay the debt I owed later that day. She contacted my father and expressed that, expressed to him that we should move back to Oregon because I was no longer safe. When moving back to Oregon, I was able to get clean for two years, beginning in 2018. I was doing fairly well. I was working with my father painting through a family business. I was paying half of the rent at an apartment that my dad and I were renting in Salem, Oregon. I then reconnected with some old friends I had before moving away to California that I knew they used drugs. And then, and I, and I then relapsed all over again. This time, I hit rock bottom and had little to nothing. I was sleeping on the floor in my room and didn't have anything to show for, show for that what I was earning at my job. I spent my checks on rent and drugs to feed my addiction. In May of 2020, I met my current fiance, Alexandria. Prior to her, I never really had a serious relationship with one single female that I wanted to pursue a relationship with. Had she not asked me for drugs the moment I was walking by her apartment while she was outside smoking a cigarette, I would have, I would have not recognized her. She invited me and a friend into her home to smoke. I was so nervous and uncomfortable that I left and didn't have the courage to go back until the following day afterward. When I returned, it was just her and I. I knew she was broken by many conversations we had when we first met. At the time, she was married to an inmate, and I knew she was very lonely and needed a good friend. It started off just like that until we became inseparable. I learned a lot about her in a short amount of time. By February of 2021, I ended up with criminal charges and doing two months in Marion County Jail for protecting her and the laptop that I originally stole from her and sold to a friend for 100 bucks. Then, he later, he later then, he then later took it back to her apartment to try to sell it back to her, but didn't know I was in the unit. I stayed in contact with Alexandria during my stay in Marion County Jail, as she, as she was my only support during the time. Shortly after being released from jail, I showed back up to her apartment and to get her and to go to a motel my dad was paying for, for the night. The time we had together made, made me truly miss her and wanted to move back in with her. I had a friend of mine move in with her while I was incarcerated to help take care of her and keep her, and keep random people from showing up. This meant we had to find a way to get him to leave. In June of 2021, I learned that she was six months pregnant and wasn't sure it could possibly be mine. Because I was in jail or our addiction was still ruling our lives, and it didn't matter that she was pregnant. By September, we were trying to minimize our use, but knew it was too risky due to her using the entire time. October 9th was her due date. There still was no signs of labor. October 13, Alexandria had severe pain and could barely move. I asked her if she wanted to go to the hospital, and she responded with, "I think it's time." Getting to the hospital, I told her I was dropping her off and going for a pack of cigarettes but didn't return. The following day, I had gone to work and still hadn't heard anything from her. Later that day, she was blowing my, blowing up my phone, crying, telling me that, telling me he was here. During that time, she was still in the hospital with our son Mason. She begged me to come stay the night with her so that he could be in the room with her. Since, since she was pretty out of it and couldn't care for him, the day, they asked her to leave the hospital and leave him there to pick, to be picked up the following day. My friend picked her up from the hospital. She made it to his house, which was pretty close, yet far from our apartment. And she attempted to walk home with, when she made it, she made it to the bar we, we used to go to. She called me saying that she wanted to go, that she wasn't going to make it further and needed to, needed me to bring the stroller we had purchased for Mason. I walked up there and pushed her home. A few months had gone by, and the state did not want to put me on her DHS case until we were sure I was the father. When the paternity test came back, I was able to begin going to visits with her to, with her as DHS. I remember being scared and not knowing what to do if he, if he would cry. She resumed, she reassured me that she, she was there to help me and that I would just do fine. On January 27th of 2023, with the help of Stacy Williams from Iron Tribe Network, I entered detox at Bridgeway to begin the process of getting my family back. From there, I ended up in Shett, Oregon at the Teen Challenge. Due to it being a faith-based program and the fact that Alexandria and I were not legally married, they frowned upon us having contact. I was, however, able to have virtual visits with Mason and her for 30 minutes on Fridays. Three weeks into the program, I received a phone call from Melissa Woloff at her place with Alexandria was reciting. She filled me in with all the benefits of the program called His Place. The county wanted to open for fathers trying to regain custody of their child. I was able to be the first graduate from His Place program, regaining physical custody of my son and being reunited with him and his mom. At Iron Tribe Network, I now work full-time while she stays home caring for Mason. Thank you for the assistance in the programs that your organization helps fund, and I thank you sincerely for letting you, for letting me and my family share our stories with you.
Thank you, Freddie.
Wow.
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 Thank you.
I'm going to brag on Commissioner Willis. I think it was your idea, wasn't it? To get His Place up and going? Because we had her place. And I'll never forget that in our insurance.
Pacific Source.
Pacific Source donated a half a million dollars, I believe, to help get that building in place. And then our, our health department, as well as our business services department, worked really hard to get His Place up and going. And we've had her place for a long time. And... And we've had her place for a long time and it's so great to hear your testimony because that's how you change the world, one person at a time, one life at a time, one heart at a time. And I'm just holding back the tears here, listening to all three of you talk about your testimony and I'm thankful that you can walk out of here and it's not easy. I get it. I mean, we all have our challenges every day, but you can walk out of here and, and have your families together stronger than you were before you went through those programs. Staff, thank you for all the work you do. And I know I've heard you been, been described as angels or whatever, you know, and it really truly is, is, is a work of the heart. And thank you so much for everybody that's in this room that's had anything to do with impacting not only your three lives, but many lives that the public doesn't get to hear about. And I know we have a reporter from the Statesman Journal sitting in the room and this would be a great story if they decided to pick up on it and, and write about it and put it on the front page. So, um, he's not even looking at me. All right.
No, Commissioner Cameron, I, I, I wanna jump in too. I wanna really sincerely thank you for coming and sharing your stories. Because there's, I do think there can be this myth out there that somebody else has the perfect life. I have all these problems, but over there, Commissioner Cameron's perfect or Jan's perfect. And that's not true. That's, that's a lie. But that's a lie that a lot of people, a lot of us at times in our lives tell ourselves, right? And I think it's so valuable when you come forward and you share the challenges you faced in your life and you share how the love for your family and your children helped you overcome those challenges. It inspires other people. It helps the rest of us when we have challenges to say, no, that's, it's not true that everybody else has it all figured out. It's not true that other people don't struggle. And just because I'm struggling right now, doesn't mean that I'm stuck. It doesn't mean that there's no hope for me, that there's a way for me to go forward. And so, I do think you coming forward and, and sharing your stories is, is an inspiration to everybody in this room and everybody watching, um, that there's hope for all of us, that each of us, when we're in that kind of dark part of our life, can move forward. And Jeff, you said it so well, which is this really is about us as a community. You know, as, as you were telling your stories, I'm listening to Hope and Her Place and His Place and Bridgeway and Iron Tribe and the police and the courts and Carol and her team and the health department and, and the whole community working together. And one of the things that I'm so proud about Marion County is that most, many of the people doing that work are also in recovery themselves. So this is a place where people who've been helped, they then go and help, right? And they go become part of the community and we each sort of build each other up. And that's really good. It's really important. And I'm also gonna say this, this is part of the reason why I'm against Measure 110 that legalized the drugs. Because if you have a system like this, where basically the people running the courts and the police and the, and the health department, they have a, a vision for recovery, not punishment, but recovery. Our, our goal is to help people. Then taking away the tools we have to help people doesn't help people get better, right? And, and so I think it's really important when you have a functioning system. And this is one of the things that I talked to Ryan about, we talked to the commissioners. It drives me crazy when you have parts of the state where their government is not functioning well, make policy that affects parts of the state where the government is functioning well. So just because up in Portland, stuff is broken and they got real problems on their hands, doesn't mean they should implement statewide policy that breaks all of our systems that are working really well. So, um, that's a bit of a, of a, I don't know, soapbox, but, but I don't wanna take away from all the good work that, that you three have done, Carol, that you and your team are doing and that our community partners are doing to help people in recovery.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to make a motion?
Please.
Well, Mr. Chair, I will, uh, move that we approve a proclamation designating the month of September 2023 as National Recovery Month in Marion County.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Take it away.
All right, Mr. Chair, before the Board of Commissioners for Marion County, Oregon, in the matter proclaiming the month of September 2023 as Recovery Month in Marion County. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on September 6th, 2023. Whereas recovery from mental health and substance use disorders of Marion County residents are of utmost importance to the well-being of Marion County as a whole. And whereas all Marion County residents have faced challenges that have impacted their wellness, including job and school-related stressors, social isolation, and other circumstances which may increase feelings of anxiety and depression and can lead to harmful level of alcohol and other drug use. And whereas the impact of mental health and substance abuse disorders is apparent in our community as preliminary data shows 86 drug-related deaths in Marion County in 2022, a 59% increase from 2020. And 1,161 people died from overdoses in Oregon in 2022. Whereas the stigma associated with substance use and mental health discourage individuals from seeking timely, appropriate, and life-changing help and...
Whereas with commitment and support, those impacted by substance abuse and mental health disorders in Marion County can embark on a journey of improved health and overall wellness. And whereas through Recovery Month, our community can become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health and substance use disorders. And individuals in need of recovery services are encouraged to seek help. And whereas Marion County Health and Human Services and our community partners are committed to promoting environments that acknowledge and support the relationship between substance use and mental health disorder recovery and overall health and wellness. And whereas the focus of Recovery Month this September is to celebrate all people that make the journey of recovery possible. By embracing the theme, recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, and every community. Recovery Month spreads the message that people can and do recover every day. And whereas the Recovery Month observance continues to work to improve the lives of those affected by mental health and substance use disorders by raising awareness and educating communities about the effective services that are available. For the above reasons, we now ask the citizens of Marion County to join us in celebrating this September as National Recovery Month. And now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed the month of September 23 as National Recovery Month in Marion County.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We got photo. I don't know. John's got a camera.
You don't have to, you. Nobody's forcing you to picture.
We have another one, Mr. Cameron. So next up, we're to consider approval of a proclamation designating the month of September 23 as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month in Marion County. Phil, I think you're up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Come on up and bring the team.
Come and see you all again.
Village. Yeah, good.
Good morning. Um, Phil, we're here today to bring to you for consideration approval of a proclamation designed for the month of September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Month. With me today, I have...
Good morning. Laura Sprouse, Zero Suicide Program Coordinator with Marion County Health and Human Services.
Good morning. Kelly Burton with Marion County Health and Human Services Prevention Team.
Tammy Sorrell with Marion County Health and Human Services.
And Laura will take off.
Actually, Tammy's gonna kick us off.
Oh, Tammy?
Yeah.
Well, good morning. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to bring more awareness to the importance of suicide prevention in Marion County. This month, we continue to promote the theme, "Life is Better With You Here in the Community." This campaign was extremely well-received when it was launched last September. The premise of this campaign is that everyone should experience a place of belonging and that every person brings value and meaning to our lives.
So as part of the campaign, we've been...
Doing a lot of community outreach around mental health promotion and suicide prevention. Uh, we've been really focused on being in all areas of the community, but really looking at the data and finding out areas that are maybe a little bit higher risk and really focusing on those areas, both from the data and also from what we're hearing from our community partners. We've been working with the hospitals, with the, um, service integration teams throughout the communities and being out at different locations such as colleges and high schools, really again promoting that mental health awareness and suicide prevention, that life is better with you here, tips on anxiety and depression, as well as promoting trainings in the community around suicide prevention. Um, this picture here is just an example of some of our outreach. We've been working with the San Yum Teen Center to, um, provide education and materials, but also encouraging, um, being outside and activity. Um, and this is just a picture of some of the activities we've been working with them.
So we, over the past year, have done lots of pop-ups. I don't have the exact number and those numbers on the screen are not correct, but we've done a lot of, um, pop-ups at, um, coffee shops, community events, high schools, colleges in the area, um, really just to get this message out there again further that life is better with you here. Um, like, as Kelly mentioned, we've really been able to focus our community efforts around high-risk ZIP codes where we've gotten data about, um, folks who have, um, gone to the emergency department for a suicide-related issue. Um, and we, um, have gotten really, really great feedback and been welcomed at these different pop-ups. As you can see on the screen, there's, um, the photo on the left is, uh, at Mount Angel, is it the high school? High school. Um, some of the students were really, really excited to get some of our Life is Better With You Here t-shirts and show them off. Um, some of them even ripped the sleeves off to make muscle tanks, so that was kinda fun. And then, um, we also have really used these pop-ups as an opportunity to spread more awareness about 988, the suicide and crisis, um, lifeline that, uh, launched last year. Um, and then also just to reduce the stigma around talking about, um, when you're struggling, talking about, um, suicide in general and just really spreading a message of hope. We are continuing this year with our Coffee Sleeve Campaign. They are now available next door at Ca- Coffee, um, as well as de- a, a wide variety of different cafes around Marion and Polk Counties. Um, last year, we had over 22,000 Coffee Sleeves distributed across those two counties and, uh, we were able to see some spikes in visits to the website that you can see on the QR code for the Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition for people seeking resources, which was really, really amazing. How many did we order this year?
Thirty thousand.
We ordered 30,000 this year and just started distributing them yesterday. So they're getting out there this week. Um, excited to have more emphasis around this, this message in this campaign.
So part of our work that we do is collaborate with the Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition, um, with Polk County and with numerous community partners. We've really been working on expanding, um, those that attend the coalition and doing some coordination between community events as well as trainings in our area. So one, um, event that we did this last May was the Signs of Hope, um, which we actually shared, I think, here at the last, um, time we were here. And so it's Signs of Hope that have, um, things like it, You Matter or Life is Better With You Here that is put out throughout our community. We had over 50 locations in Marion and Polk County promoting those signs and, and I still see them up, um, throughout the year, which is really exciting. This is, and the picture here is a co- a picture of the Woodburn Ambulance and they had their signs posted in both English, Spanish, and Russian up there in Wood, in Woodburn. So we have partners throughout the county from schools to insurance to hospitals and to CBOs in our community. Um, last, uh, this summer, we actually received a grant from the Oregon Alliance to prevent suicide and so our efforts are going to be making sure that we have educational materials in multiple languages that, um, we can provide out to our community. We're also really focusing on getting information out there to our community through trainings around suicide prevention. So we're increasing our capacity to provide the, um, question persuade and refer training, which is QPR, which is very similar to CPR for our health. QPR is like that for our mental health. So it helps just general public learn how to talk to people about suicide and help others get help that they need. And so part of the group of our coalition has created, um, a campaign. Um, we've looked at some of the data and suicidal ideation increases, um, starting in October and actually is still kinda high even through the first of the year. So we wanted to really create a campaign that, uh, really stretched through that timeframe to help support people and give resources. So we've created the Links to Life Campaign because life is better with you here. And so each month, we'll have a topic that will be highlighted. And so starting in September with L is Learn. So we're really focusing both through social media and through our partners, um, helping to learn the signs of suicide, learn where we can get help, which is again, um, promoting the 988 phone number and, um, learn how to decrease the stigma. So really making it more an approachable topic for our community to talk about.
In October, I stands for Involve Yourself. So that can include things like participating in a walk, which, uh, the Out of Darkness Walk takes place in October, or attend classes that might be of interest. And attend coalition meetings as well. The Suicide Prevention Coalition meets in October.
Um, continuing into November, we are focusing on nurturing yourself and others. Um, the Surgeon General recently issued an advisory that loneliness is, um, at an all-time high and is really detrimental to our mental health. And so, um, we're encouraging folks to reach out to those who may be in need of connection. Um, we're hoping to partner with some senior centers to provide connection cards throughout that season and then also focus on some gratitude that month alongside Thanksgiving. In December, we wanna encourage folks to know their resources, know what's available to them. Uh, we're gonna highlight local resources using our social media platforms, um, and hopefully do some, uh, like kinda informal interviews with folks that work at those organizations so that they can share, uh, what they do. Um, again, highlighting 988 and hopefully bringing some new, um, awareness to our mobile crisis team, um, as that is getting off the ground. And then finally, in January, we are gonna go beyond the resolution. We want people to be able to sustain their wellness throughout the year. So how can they take the tools and the skills and the information that we've given them in the past four months and take it into the new year and continue to use it? Um, so we'll have some tools for folks to do that. We'll encourage continuing to create connections and, um, have some planning and apps that we can share with folks, um, to further support that as well. I also totally forgot to have Tammy mention, um, how the Coffee Sleeves impacted her a few years ago, so...
Thank you. Uh, yes, so last September, my husband and I were visiting Salem and we were thinking about relocating here. So we grabbed a coffee downtown and I saw that bright yellow sleeve, that Life is Better With You Here sleeve. And I was so impressed because that message, it, it resonates with me. Uh, I find that mental health is an important topic to talk about and I just knew that this was the community where I wanted to work and live. So we moved here.
Wow, that's pretty good.
It's pretty great. It's pretty awesome. She shared that with me and I got goosebumps.
I'm sorry?
Where'd you move from?
Boise, Idaho.
Any other recruitment ideas you have? Feel free to like, just implement them. Don't ask permission, just do it.
But that's on the record, right?
Takes two commissioners. It takes two commissioners.
So that's, that's kind of our plan for September and moving forward. Um, we, again, just appreciate the opportunity every year to come before you and share this proclamation, share about what we're doing to support the community. Loved hearing about all the Recovery Month efforts before this because that's suicide prevention too. Um, all the work that every Health and Human Services Department employee does every day is suicide prevention and so, um, and that energy and movement is also really present in our communities right now. So we hope you just continue to, um, support our efforts and, um, those of our community partners as we aspire towards a community that is free of suicide.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, I've shared thoughts in the past about my issues and the help that I've received and I just really appreciate that, that there's an awareness out there that, uh, at different levels, we all need, uh, friends and counseling or whatever. levels, we all need friends and counseling or whatever. And so appreciate what we do, just like the last group that was up here. You're right, that's suicide prevention, that recovery is, and having hope, and I think that's the big, the big message from the yellow. It's like, life is better with you here because now we can help you, help you direct what you see in life that you can do, so. And it was interesting to hear Jeff in the previous panel that, you know, he, he now sees, he can't, he can't write a check, but he can see what he can do to help. And, and I didn't make this comment, but, what was her name, the lady that was here before?
Alexandra.
Yeah, Alexandra, yeah, yeah. And it doesn't really have a lot to do with suicide prevention, but when she said that she, I think she had spent 20 days in jail, and that made her, that helped her turn her life around and said, okay, I got to change here. So we all have different things that we need to help us give, get direction, and the counseling that you provide is, is great. And to have people move from Boise, Idaho to Oregon, that's a huge, that's a huge victory for us, right? It's usually the other way around. People who live in Oregon going to Boise.
You know, one thing I was thinking about, Commissioner, and Ryan, you haven't spoken, but I, I just want to compliment you. Ryan Matthews is here, and I want to compliment all of you. I just have, I feel like there's a real service orientation, a mindset of service in the Health Department. And I see Carol and Susan back there, too. I want to compliment all of you on that because that's something that doesn't happen by accident. It comes from people having that in their heart, and then everybody buying into that mindset of how do we serve our community? And I can just see that in the work that you're doing on suicide prevention. I can see that in the work that Carol's team is doing on recovery, seeing the work that your team's doing, Susan. And so I just want to encourage you on that because it's, it's a compliment to, to all of you that, you know, your work sort of speaks for itself, and I think the community can see that you're really oriented towards serving the community, and that's a big deal. So, thank you.
And you mentioned earlier that, you know, a lot of the folks that get into this line of work have lived experience. I can speak for all four of us that are up here. We do have lived experience with knowing someone who has died by suicide, having our own struggle or something similar. And so that really is, like, at least for me, my why. Everybody else, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And, and thank you for turning that passion into work, right? I think it's easy to be passionate about something on one day. It's hard to show up to work every day, year in and year out, and turn that passion into positive change in our community. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, you ready?
Yeah, you gonna make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve a proclamation designated the month of September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Marion County.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
All right, and here we go. Before the Board of Commissioners from Marion County, Oregon, in the matter proclaiming the month of September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Marion County. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on September 6, 2023, whereas mental health is a key component of holistic wellness for individuals of all ages, families, and communities across Marion County, and whereas suicide is a tragic outcome of many complex factors and requires our immediate attention, consistent attention, and appropriate resources for prevention, intervention, and postvention efforts, and whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in Oregon and the 12th leading cause of death in the United States, and there is an estimated 1.7 million suicide attempts every year in the United States, and whereas it is estimated that each death by suicide directly impacts over 135 individuals, including family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, the entire community, and whereas the stigma associated with mental health suicide and lived experiences with these topics works against suicide prevention by discouraging individuals at risk for suicide from seeking timely, appropriate, and lifesaving help and...
Whereas Marion County Health and Human Services continues to implement the Zero Suicide Initiative to drive systemic change, remove stigma, and support healthy communities with the bold vision of zero suicides within our community. And whereas Marion County Health and Human Services Mental Health Promotion and Suicide Prevention Program aims to support the mental health and well-being of our community through thoughtful outreach and collaborative, impactful, and sustainable partnerships. And whereas people experiencing mental health concerns and/or thoughts of suicide need an understanding, empathetic and encouraging place of belonging as they seek support. And whereas Marion County Health and Human Services is committed to building such spaces of belonging, connection, and safety to support those experiencing thoughts of suicide. And whereas every person or organization has an essential role in supporting suicide prevention, reducing stigma, and saving lives. And whereas Marion County Health and Human Services will continue to foster relationships with our community partners to spread recovery, wellness, and prevention efforts throughout our communities. And whereas Marion County Health and Human Services believes that life is better and everyone here can achieve their highest level of health and aspire to a future in which our community is free of suicide. Now therefore, it's hereby proclaimed the month of September 2023 is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Marion County. All right, there we go. I think we signed these, right?
Yeah, I think we signed them.
Okay.
We're gonna send some goodies up here.
Okay, Commissioner Cameron, now we have to get to work.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent calendar under Board of Commissioners. OLCC application recommended approval of Haven Inc., DBA Haven Estate, Omsville, Oregon. Under Board Committee Appointments, Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee, approve an order appointing Mike Berger to the Marion County Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee with a term ending January 31, 2024. Under Human Resources, approve a recommendation to update classification and adjust the pay grades upward for Class Code 004 Tax Clerk, 074 Assistant Clerk, 075 Assessment Clerk Senior, 113 Dean Clerk, 322 Cartographic GIS Tech, 323 Cartographer GIS Tech Senior, 328 Personal Property Appraisal Tech, 335 Chief Deputy Assessor, and update the classification and uphold the pay grades for Class Code 041 Tax Clerk Senior, and 044 Tax Office Supervisor Tax Collector. And, under Public Works, schedule the adoption of an administrative ordinance for September 13, 2023, amending the Marion County Code to permit an event business as a home occupation in the exclusive farm use special agriculture of farm timber zones. Next item, under Public Works, approve Amendment Number Two to the Private Development Agreement for Public Road Improvements with East Park LLC to install temporary traffic signals at Corden Road and Auburn Road, submit a construction bond, and record the Phase Four plat. Also, under Public Works, approve an order to remove public access restrictions on North Fort Road, Southeast Gates Hill Road, and Pioneer Southeast that were imposed for public safety purposes following the 2020 Beechey Creek and Lions Head fire. And finally, under Sheriff's Office, approve Amendment Number Eight to the Incoming Funds Intergovernmental Agreement with United States Department of Interior BLM to add $25,250 for a new contract total of $248,968 to continue to provide patrol services on BLM land through December 31, 2023.
I will second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Nope, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, we have one action item this morning. Larry, do you and your team want to come on up here? We're gonna consider approval of a resolution approving Alternative Two as a preferred alternative for the Detroit Marina's Excavation and Resiliency Project. Kelly, I see you back there. You're not, your name wasn't on my list. Are you moral support? You're welcome to come up if you want. Great, perfect, okay.
Good.
Great, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Larry Rupp, an economic development specialist with the Marion County Community Services Department.
I'm Josh Elliott, a senior engineer with Mal Foster Alangi, the consultant who is helping accounting for this project.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. What is the Detroit Marina's Excavation and Resiliency Project? It's the strategic excavation of about 162,000 yards of sediment from the two commercial marinas out at Detroit Lake. The goal of this project is to support the recovering economy of Detroit by maintaining an annual summer lake season of May 1st to October 1st and support them in their recovery. Here's a map of Detroit, and you can see those two red circles are the two marinas to be excavated. This resiliency project is estimated to create $1.2 million annually in direct and indirect economic activity through the region of the North San Yum Canyon, and that was calculated through a 2016 study done by the North San Yum Watershed Council called the Importance of Water in the North San Yum Basin. And the project is estimated to create $14.6 million in net economic gain for the region over 20 years. The project is needed because multiple factors have affected Detroit Lake's ability to maintain full pool depth during the summer. One, changing weather patterns, municipal water needs, fish and wildlife mitigation policies, and of course, a five-foot reduction of full pool depth to mitigate the hazard at Detroit's dam that somewhat dried up these marinas and shortened the season and damaged their economy from it, which is highly dependent on recreational tourism from these marinas. In response to community comments, Marion County explored opportunities for beneficial reuse of these excavated materials so that way it could compact, compound these benefits to the community, for example, using these materials to construct new parks and trails, habitat for fish and wildlife, or other recreation opportunities. In 2011, the U.S. Forest Service and the University of Oregon partnered together to author a study called the Detroit Lake Restoration and Enhancement Design Booklet, and these alternatives were based off of those designs and different community comments from that Marion County, as always, is committed to collaboration with our partners and committed to community outreach. First, we started this Phase One project with interagency collaboration to develop three sediment use options which are feasible to permit and construct. You can see all the different stakeholders and input we worked with to make sure that we had viable solutions, and then we received community feedback on the three alternatives and ultimately brought it all together here today to recommend a preferred alternative to the Marion County Board of Commissioners. Here's a example of the schedule. You can see right now we're at the end of Phase One, which is sort of a concept planning phase where we conducted a feasibility study between three different alternatives. And here, at the end of it, Marion County Board of Commissioners adopts a preferred alternative, and then upon that, we move on into Phase Two for engineering and permitting. To summarize what we did over Phase One, first, we started with existing plan reviews, and then we went in, looked at these different regulatory processes, talked to our different regulatory agencies and stakeholders, made sure everybody was all aligned with moving forward, did a ton of public outreach, performed this cost-benefit analysis with the assistance of Mal Foster Alangi. And then we brought the results to the city of Detroit and received a recommendation from them for backing the preferred alternative that they would like to recommend to the Marion County Board of Commissioners for adoption. The alternative analysis process identified Alternative Two as the potential preferred alternative. This is an extension of the Osprey Point Peninsula that you can walk out to from the Detroit Flat Stay Use Area. On August 8, Detroit City Council reviewed the results of public outreach and the results of the feasibility study and adopted Resolution Number 655 to formally recommend Alternative Two to the board as the potential preferred alternative. I'll turn it over to Josh to talk a little bit about Alternative Two.
Thank you, Larry. So as Larry mentioned, there's an existing day use area at Detroit Flats, and so Alternative Two builds off of an existing high point in the reservoir that divides the San Yum Basin from the Brighton Bush Basin, heading out towards Piety Island. So we'll take that peninsula and extend it around and make use of a low point in the topography to make a sheltered area for boats on the inside of the peninsula, provide opportunities for fishing on the outside of the peninsula. And then also, as the water level comes down, there's an existing island that develops, and so this peninsula would come adjacent to that island and provide opportunities to fish and access the island to the west from there. So there's a number of potential benefits to the city of Detroit from this project, primarily extending the marina's operating season. But the county really directed us to look for ways to make a community benefit out of the material that we're excavating. The original plans looked at taking it somewhere else and placing it upland just to get rid of it, but we wanted to make sure there was an opportunity to provide benefit, and so that includes additional recreational opportunities, so balancing the needs of boaters as well as pedestrians and trying to listen to the community. They established a preference for places that would be sheltered, where they could bring their boats up, and then also make use of that existing day use area as an extension there. So the peninsula would add approximately three-quarters of a mile of round trip out and back to the end of the existing peninsula, so make it a bit of a hiking destination. Another improvement is that this area is very shallow at full pool elevation right now, and then as the water drops, becomes high ground. And so this would better define the existing access channel between Piety Island and the shoreline here and reduce boating hazards. And then also, we plan to install plants along the peninsula, which will make for enhanced wildlife habitat, which was a component of that restoration booklet, the Forest Service Design Booklet.
Thank you. The project's currently being funded from a combination of federal, state, local sources. You can see on this table, we have an ARPA allocation, a congressionally-directed spending request, Business Organ, Brown's Field Redevelopment Fund, as well as a local contribution provided by the Marion County Economic Development Program. You can see our budget here, and with that, the stakeholders are aligned, the community backs the plan, and our, and we are financially backed for the plan to move forward. Staff recommend to approve the resolution to adopt Alternative Two for the preferred alternative in order to identify next steps for engineering, permitting, and construction.
Thank you, Larry. Commissioner, thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Larry and Josh, maybe you go back to the slide, we had the list of collaboration of all the, that's quite a ways back, I don't know, halfway back, right there. So you've got U.S. Forest Service, Army Corps, these are the ones I'm concerned about. U.S. Forest Service, Army Corps, Department of Environmental Quality, Department of State Lands, Oregon Fish and Wildlife. Are they, are they ready to give us permits based on the work that's been done? Because this is what's held us up in the past. We get there and they go, ah.
Yeah, so that, that was a large focus of our effort, was to look for potential pitfalls. There will be a permitting process for sure, but I think we understand that there is a path forward with all. But I think we understand that there is a path forward with all the agencies. So that's, that's what we're moving forward with.
Okay.
One, I think importantly, part of this process is that our understanding is they have to approve where we put the dirt, right? So we can't just dig up the dirt and then toss it in the garbage. There's, there actually has to be a good plan that all these agencies feel comfortable with.
Okay, and so they're okay with this Phase One alternative that we're going to approve? What would, what do you foresee as challenges down the road as we get, as we go after the permits?
I think schedule will be a challenge, so that'll be our job to push that schedule. There's, there's a note, so the Army Corps permit is sort of an overarching permit. And then there's others like National Marine Fisheries Service that consult with the Army Corps. And so that will be a challenge, getting them to move on a decision.
Yeah, because one of the, one of the challenges we had before was, I think it was somewhere at the state, they, they identified the in-water work time was like in August and they didn't understand that we're doing this in the dry. So you, you've got those kinds of things cleared.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's actually a benefit to the project in terms of the other regulatory agencies.
Right. And we just got to get the, our, James up at our town to quit writing. His headline was dredging. Or not dredging, we're excavating, yeah, so. All right, it's great work, Mr. Chair.
Please, I made the motion.
Yeah, and I'm going to declare a potential conflict of interest, although I think the population is too large. I am a resident of Detroit and I have kept my boat in the, one of the marinas up there for many, many years.
And you might go for a walk on this if it gets built.
I walked, I actually ran out to the island on, what was it, Saturday or Sunday? When did the Beavers play?
Saturday.
They played Sunday, so before the Beaver game, I went for a run out to the island.
So so long as we're doing that, I'll declare a potential conflict. I might actually walk on this too, once it gets done.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a resolution approving Alternative Two as the preferred alternative for the Detroit Marina's Excavation and Resiliency Project.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. It's been a long time.
Thank you.
That's it for our agenda. Do you have anything else you'd like to talk about, Commissioner, before we adjourn?
No, but I did put my boat in on Saturday up there.
Did you?
And you know what was cool about it because there's no marinas boating? There's nobody on the lake and it was a beautiful day.
I bet that's nice.
My grandsons loved it, yeah. So that, that's, that's a benefit when the marinas close early and the weather's still nice. But, yeah, I did that Saturday.
There you go, that's good.
And then Sunday I went for a run out there and then watched the Beavers crush San Jose State.
This is their year.
That was, that's what the weekend was about.
This is their year. This is when the Beavers are going to be great, right?
Well.
This is it.
I don't know, we'll see. Wouldn't it be ironic though?
If they ran the table?
If they, yeah, if they do do well, do their job.
Here we go.
Yeah. Run the table, run the, I didn't say that, he said it.
I did, I like soccer.
Actually, I actually contacted a buddy of mine who's a USC fan. He's been, you know, USC guy for a long time, lives down in California. And we're, we're actually going to get our tickets early for the championship.
Yeah, there you go.
He'll, yes, SC probably will be there, but I don't know if the Beavers will, so we'll see. But I'm going to go anyways.
This is the year, this is the year.
This could be.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.